Okay, this June 3rd, 2015 meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. Thank you all for coming. As you all know, there's been a great loss in the Oyster River school community and we'd like to have Kenny Rotner say a few words in memory of Lou Maraz.
Thank you. Less than two weeks ago, our schools and our community lost a very valuable member, an esteemed educator, a good friend, and a very unique individual. Lou Maraz taught at Oyster River High School for 34 years prior to his retirement last June. Before that, he had taught in the Rochester School District system and actually began his career teaching with his wife on an Indian reservation in the southwest. His distinct manner of speaking and accent declared his New York roots. He certainly wasn't a New Englander at birth. Lou loved hiking, swimming, and Motown music. He often said that he'd be happy with two slices and a Coke. He also loved to teach and inspire his students while developing close connections with them. When a particular class displayed that excitement that he so sought and he could see the minds really working in his students, he would offer further encouragement with the words, "We're movin' and groovin', we're shakin' and bacon." Lou taught psychology in a class on the '60s among other subject matter here at the high school, and the '60s was a very fitting class for Lou to teach as he very much believed in challenging authority that he thought was misguided, and taught his students about the Civil Rights Movement, the Women's Movement, and the anti-war movement. Lou will be missed by the many whose lives he's touched. Boom da-da-boom-boom-boom.
Thank you. Could we have a moment of silence in memory of Lou Maraz? Okay, we'll move to public comment.
Dave Holly, Oyster River Teachers Guild. First, thanks Kenny for the kind words on my fellow colleague Lou Maraz, and he is deeply missed in our department. I actually came here today to request that the board reconsider the vote on a full day for the last day for students. We certainly want a full day for faculty without question, but we felt that since there's no need for the hours in the schedule for a full day for students, that we keep to the tradition of having it a half-day for students in the elementary and middle school. It wouldn't impact the high school since they're on an exam schedule, but understandably, we've had a series of standardized exams in the course of the month of May, and while those have been onerous, we'd hate to have the students pay a further burden of a full day of school on the last day, defying a tradition that they've always looked forward to. So, we hope that you reconsider that. There's been a lot of traditions for the faculty as well in the elementary schools that use that second part of the day to pack up their rooms, to honor one another as some folks are moving into retirement, and in this year especially, since there's no teacher workshop day the following day, those rooms should be closed and finished for the summer. So, we hope that you reconsider. Thank you.
Other public comment? Okay, here we go.
Could I make a request that we add that to our agenda to discuss that issue that was raised by Mr. Holly?
Why don't you make that as a motion and then we'll just...
Okay, so I move that we add to our discussion tonight in decision-making whether we should follow the recommendation we heard from Mr. Holly to make that last day of school a half-a-day for students.
Is there a second? Seconded by Kenny, seconded by Al. Discussion to put this on the agenda? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. There also are two other items that need to be added without with your consent. We have to sign a scholarship request with school board. You know, there's a request to distribute scholarship money that has to be approved, so that could be added. And the administration has asked that there be, you know, we need to approve the appointment of a music teacher, so I assume that would be okay to add those two. Is that okay? Okay. Okay, could I have a motion to approve the, let's start with the May 14th, 2015 workshop minutes? Denise?
I move to accept the May 14th workshop minutes.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Al. Is there discussion, changes? Sarah?
On page four, about halfway down, I think when we're talking, Al's talking about the standardized testing goal piece, there are two parts where Tom and I have comments back-to-back, and I believe they are about STAR, not STEM.
Yes, that's correct. Okay, that change? Are there other changes? Hearing none? Prove those minutes with those changes? Raise your hand. All in favor? Seven in favor, student rep. You weren't there, so, okay, abstaining. Can we move to the May 20th regular meeting minutes? Could I have a motion to accept those minutes? Denise?
I move to accept the May 20th regular board meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Al. Are there changes? Sarah?
Always. The one I'd like to change is page five at the top, when we're talking about Goal 6E. It talks about to continue to investigate the feasibility of a later start time for ORHS and ORMS, I believe. It is both the high school and the middle school.
Okay.
So if you could add that.
That addition? Are there other changes? Hearing none? All those in favor of the minutes amended, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Okay. Announcements and commendations from the district? Todd?
First of all, I do want to thank you for taking a moment to honor Lou Maraz tonight. I also just want to thank all the community members who've reached out to us at the high school. I've heard from alumni from all over, all over the country really, just expressing their heartfelt sorrow, so we do appreciate the support we've gotten from the community at the high school, so thank you. Couple of other things I wanted to mention on a positive note. I can't remember what night it was. Monday night, I had the pleasure of being a part of the National Honor Society induction ceremony. We had 44 students inducted into the National Honor Society, which is, I don't know if that's a record number, but it's a lot of kids, and I think it really speaks to the high standards that our kids have for themselves, but also that the school has as well, so that's a wonderful thing. And I would also like to just, because it's happening as we speak, the senior art show is taking place down at the high school in the multipurpose room. Great event. It's open all day tomorrow as well, so if you want to stop by and check it out, it's just, we have some tremendously talented artists at the high school, and they just, it's, I can't even do justice to describing, it's just very impressive work, so please take an opportunity to check it out. So, thanks.
Other district?
Jay Rashad, principal of the middle school. Just two quick things. I was fortunate to go to the scholar leader dinner last Thursday night in Manchester. Our scholar leaders, Lucas Hamilton and Sadie Gardner. One of the challenges that our seventh grade teachers have is picking a scholar leader because we have so many deserving students. There's dozens that could deserve such an award, so that's a challenge. And I'd be remiss not to mention, we had our Living History Day today out back. Mr. Grove and Mrs. Reeve, of course, participated in that, and I'm sorry to say, we did not change history. The Union slash North students told me that they did win the battle at Edesburg, so thank you.
Jay? Could I, and I'm forgetting if it was during your service day. Did that happen?
Absolutely. Service Palooza was extremely successful. I've already got numerous compliments from the community members. We worked at churches, we worked over at Dennis's school. What a great day, so if you saw 600 and something students out in the community with orange shirts, was, I think it was on the 19th, that was definitely us, and it was a great day. Thanks for bringing that up, Kenny. Appreciate it.
The community greatly appreciates you as well.
Yes, thank you.
Other district?
Good evening. Harry Vash from Mastway. Just one quick announcement. I'd like to invite everyone to come over to Mastway tomorrow night, where our school gets transformed into an amazing art gallery. Deb Hastings, our art teacher, does a fabulous job of making sure every student in the school has one piece of artwork chosen and displayed for this showing, and it really is spectacular from 5:30 to 7 o'clock. Come on over to Mastway. Thanks.
Thank you. Other district comments? Board comments? Let's move to the acknowledgement of the list of middle school and high school teachers and lots of comments after that. Okay, so.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I'll do this a little different tonight than I did the last time and just read the people that we're honoring tonight, and then turn it over to the principals and the guild to continue to recognize our retirees. So, Thomas Bonacorsi, he's grade eight science. He started in 1974 with a master's in 30, so he was, already had his master's, already had great coursework behind him, and his starting salary was $8,475. Michelle McGinnis is grade six math. She started in 1974. She didn't have her master's, she only had her bachelor's with a step three, so she didn't make quite as much as Tom, $7,925. Alan Nesberg, you can see there's a pattern here about 1974, it was a great year evidently for teachers. Alan is a music teacher. He started in 1974. Not only did he not have his master's and bachelor's, he was only half-time. So, his starting salary was $3,813. And then, and then he became, in the same year, I guess he was full-time, it was half-time at the instrumental and half-time at music, and so they separated it out. His starting salary at the elementary level was $4,125. So, that gives you a sense of our middle school retirees. And Amy McPhee, who couldn't be here tonight, but we still recognize, is a phys ed teacher. She started in 1995 with a bachelor's degree at step one, $25,089. So, I'll turn it over to the principals and the guild to continue our recognition.
Guess I'll start. This is never easy. Michelle, you want to come on up, please? Barb D.
Oh, that's how it goes.
Again, this is never easy. I started working here 16 years ago, and I was fortunate to get to work with Michelle directly in a math classroom. One of my first memories was all these positive things she always had all over the walls. I've always been into inspirational type things, so I was really drawn to that. She has middle school kids and students in her soul. I mean, she understands middle school students. She knows they do wacky things and appreciates that. I do have one bad memory, Michelle, and it's not her fault. One of those situations where you know who you were with and when it happened was 9/11, when that tragedy happened. I was with Michelle in her class and when we learned of that, so again, that's not a good memory, but again, I always remember who I was one, was, who I was with. Back to the positive, one of my fondest memories again of her classroom, she had this starfish story. You know, where the old man is falling behind a father and a son, and they could have it incorrect, and he challenges the father and son, you know, "Why are you wasting your time throwing these starfish into the ocean?" And they respond to him, "Well, it makes a difference to this one." And Michelle, please know, we know that you've made a big difference for our kids. Thank you.
So, I've had the pleasure of working with Michelle on a team, but I know she was at the middle school long before I was, in a variety of capacities, both as a math teacher, a language arts teacher. She's taught sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, so I think as a math teacher, you can figure all the permutations of how Michelle has taught at the middle school, and I'm excited for her. She's retiring, and she'll have a chance to spend time with her children and her first grandchild who's about to be born. So, congratulations, Michelle, and good luck.
Again, one of the things you always appreciate as a colleague and of course as a principal is someone that always has this will-do anything attitude. Resus duty, I remember when I first started working here, Al and I did resus duty all the time. He always did it with a smile on when he needed help or you were in a jam, he needed a supervision of the dance. Al was always willing to do it, again, with a smile on. He would do anything for kids, and again, when I'd go ask him, "Hey, Al, can you help with this?" It's always kind of challenging because you never know with the response, but you know he's going to say yes. But it always struck me, what he would always say to me, he says, you know, "I'm here to serve kids," and that's what he's all about. So, and again, he always did it with a smile on. A good example is our music situation this year. We really improved our program, but we were kind of in a scheduling situation, and it wasn't for Al being willing to work here at the middle school and also go over to help Odo Maharamit. I don't think what we're doing right now would have been possible, so thank you, Al. Appreciate it.
It was October 1st, 1973, when Alan Nesberg first came to our district. Apparently, he wasn't paid for the first year at all. So, the records don't show that. Just confirm again.
Like everything, he volunteered that first year.
I think it might have been. "Tire Yellow Ribbon" by Captain and Tenille was the number-one hit song then. Ten days after Alan arrived, Vice President Agnew would resign in disgrace, and within a year, President Nixon would resign as well. The final episodes of the Brady Bunch were in the can, ready to be aired, and that epic vehicle, the GMC Pacer, dubbed the Flying Fish Bowl, was just about to start running off the assembly lines. Nothing lasts forever. That said, the effect of a good teacher is monumental. It is transforming. No one can exactly say what a teacher's influence has, where it ends, because a teacher's influence affects eternity. And Alan, you've been part of that. It's hard to imagine anyone more gentle or more generous than Alan. He's always volunteered to do the job that needed to be done with whatever resources were available. I'm quite sure that in his 42 years here at Oyster River, he never taught in a room with a window. Forty-two, I know most of us want to view, but, and yet, armed only with a smile, a trumpet case, and a thermos of coffee, Alan's always been the first to arrive every morning, usually an hour and a half before the rest of the staff. Along with his teaching, Alan has found time to create a small book of poetry each year, which he gives to the staff. Charles Darwin reflected that if he had his life to live over again, he would have made it a rule to read poetry and listen to music every week. He said, "The loss of these talents is a loss of happiness and may possibly be injurious to the intellect and more probably the moral character." So, I'm going to conclude with one of Alan's poems from the many, many books that we have received from him. "I will breathe music into your soul. No one shall stop me. I will cultivate within me the spirit of mid-autumn with its warm colors and crisp mornings and blow it forth until your heart sings or until you clasp your hands over your ears." Congratulations, Alan.
Okay, so now for Tom Bonacorsi and Nate Grove.
Do you want us up? Please. Please. I'm kind of old, you know, so this isn't easy.
Hopefully, it doesn't bother them, but I always still like to call him Mr. B. The three Cs, calm, cool, and collected. Again, back in the day, before email, we would always have a lot of our parents come in. They were unsure what was going on with their son or daughter, if they weren't doing well in school, so we would have a lot more team meetings. We didn't have the contact that we do now with power school and parents. And I always marveled at how he handled some of these challenging meetings that we were involved in. He always was a really good listener. He always came up with a good plan, was always very thoughtful. And I guess the biggest compliment I can give him is, you know, sometimes as principal, I'm in challenging meetings once in a while, and people will say, "Jeez, Jay, how did you handle that situation so well?" Well, I learned it from him. Thank you.
I think it would help me and be remiss if I didn't mention that regarding Living History, Living History Day today, which we all seem to stumble over, Jay, thanks for the kind words, that Tom Bonacorsi's been a huge part of that for 20 years. We started out very small. Each year, we build a little bit, and now we have something that seems to be taking on a life of its own. So, you know, Tom Bonacorsi has been a huge part of that, Julia Wodelski, Keith Savage, and a number of others, and parents, it's really a community effort. But I just, we'll get on to Tom right now. First of all, Tom actually started working at the school before I was born. I just want to make that really clear. Okay, maybe a bit of a lie, maybe a bit of a lie. But one thing is a fact, and that is that when I started, and Tom was already here, I did not need glasses. When I started and Tom was a pro, I had a lot more hair than I do now. When I started and Tom was the long-in-tooth veteran, I also had hair that was not gray. So, Tom, you really have done a great job for us for many, many years. A lot of our lives seem to be focused on endings, and we think about, you know, the end of our high school, the end of our college, the end of summer, the end of a school year. But another way to think of it is that every one of those things is also a new beginning, and that is a major thing that I have learned from Tom, and I think it echoes what Jay is saying, that Tom has this unbelievable gift for reminding us that there are other ways to see things, whether they be dilemmas, whether they be challenges, he views them always as opportunities. He has a gift for saying things like, "What if we looked at it a different way? What if we considered things in a different way?" Over the course of my experience, my 20 years' experience with Tom, I've not only been his colleague, but also become his friend. I don't pretend to know everything about him at all, but I do know that everything that he does, whether it's work, or life, or play, he approaches with that same spirit of the unscripted adventure. Working with Tom has enabled me and I think all of my colleagues who work with Tom to embrace that approach, whether it's child rearing, whether it's marriage, whether it's mountaineering, whether it's biking, any number of things. I don't want to wrap, I don't want to go on too, too long here. It really could be a long time to speak on behalf of Tom. But he has, he has developed, I think in all of us, a really powerful ability to look at things uniquely. We will miss, you know, we will miss that. Without judgment, without placement of value, Tom has repeatedly encouraged all of us to challenge ourselves, to get better in all of our thinking, to transition problems to challenges and endings to new adventures. It's been a great pleasure.
I know we're probably not supposed to make comments, but I just wanted to throw in, I like that half-day, last day.
Out of order.
Actually, I'm going to step off script for just a second, because I worked at the middle school for 26 years before coming to the high school, and Michelle, Tom, and Al were dear colleagues of mine for all that time. And, you know, I just, it means a lot to be here, to see them retiring. They're just tremendous, tremendous people, and congratulations to them, and I wish them very well in retirement. I'm going to ask Dave Holly to come on down and join me. It actually is kind of poetic that Amy is not here tonight for two reasons. One, we can talk about her without her being here, and I don't have to be fearful of it, not that I would. But the other part is, this is Amy. I mean, in fact, when I began talking with her about her retirement, she was like, "I don't want anybody to know. Don't tell anybody. Just let them find out naturally. I'm slipping out the back door," you know? And I think she very much is a very humble person. I think I have to share one story that starts very sadly, but I think it ended incredibly positively, and I can almost tell you that it is entirely because of Amy McPhee and Danuta Richards. Back three years ago, we had, Mike Troy, our shop teacher, had a very serious heart event at school, and obviously, it was a very critical situation. Danuta Richards was one of the first people on scene, and of course, when you're dealing with CPR and doing all that kind of stuff to save a life, it's very, it takes a lot of energy, and Danuta's description of Amy on that moment was that she flew in like Superman and took charge of the scene, and I know Mike would say this if he were here too, but she literally saved his life. And I think tonight, Amy is at EMT training. That's what she's doing. She's retiring in name only. She is not retiring to stop working. She's retiring to move on to another career, which has been a passion of hers for a long time. This is definitely, she's one of those people that plans things out. She's always got a plan. She knew when she started teaching at Oyster River, she was going to do 20 years, and then she was going to move on and become an emergency medical technician, and that's what she's doing. And true to her word, she's moving on to do that. She is, I think, you know, Danuta described her as Superman. I think a lot of people at the high school would describe her as Superwoman, excuse me. She's just a remarkable person. She's always there to step in. She, I cannot tell you how many times I've turned to her over my four years, and really, she's been there, and she's one of those most dependable staff members. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dave to speak on behalf of the guild.
Todd pretty much took all my material, and I think that's why we dress similar to him. Both have the same kind of social studies background, but Amy, when she, this morning, I was like, "Well, Amy, I want to say a few words," and she's like, "No, you don't. You're not going to say a few. You don't even have to, Dave." And I was like, "Well, I really want to." And she's like, "Well, I'm not retiring. I know you're not retiring. You're moving on." But you definitely need to be acknowledged, because her efforts in the high school, not only with saving lives, which is amazing in and of itself, but she is, in many ways, the compass that I use for what is right. And it's rare when you have a human that is just so... And it's rare when you have a human that is just so dedicated, consistent, and humble, kind, and generous. And she has this voice that is omnipresent in a room. While it might be kind of soft, it has this kind of raspy quality that permeates every corner. And when she's speaking, she's saying what is right and what is important. And that will be missed. Of course, we fully support what she's doing, and we know that she'll do amazing things in her next job, but her absence will be felt. So thank you very much, Amy.
Congratulations to all of you. Tremendous service to the Oyster River community. So move to the other announcements and commendations from the board. Al?
I just have one, and it's kind of fitting, because last night, Mr. Nasberg was the cymbals. Last night was the fifth grade concert, and it was, there was just so many kids involved in the show chorus, and the chorus, and the band, and it was, it was great to see. So it's, you're leaving a really strong program, which is nice to see.
Others? Niece?
Yeah, I just, I was at the concert as well, and just at the high school art show, and there's just so many wonderful, even looking around the library, at these displays of these stories that are written by students, and it's just wonderful at this time of year to be able to see, kind, I know it's a lot of work, but it's just wonderful. And thank you to all the faculty for all their hard work and inspiring our kids.
Sarah?
I just want to piggyback off of Jay's comment about the Service Palooza, and somebody on his staff, Jay, I don't know who it was, created a fantastic slideshow that's been put on Facebook that shows the kids in the various places that they were. And that's a pretty great slideshow. Thank you.
And it spent a little bit of time, but I think the musical fame was just spectacular. Congratulations to everybody who was involved in that. And I just wanted to say something. Somebody may be familiar with the book that just came out by Robert Putnam called Our Kids, about what things can really advantage kids, particularly kids who may not have all kinds of advantages. And one thing, he comes out so strongly for is extracurricular activities that bring adults, you know, into kids' lives, and gives them these opportunities. And I just think this district is so rich that way, and just how important that is, and how often those people who are, maybe just be volunteers, just have such a significant impact upon kids' lives. And so I just, maybe, and maybe, you know, it's true all the way up, but sometimes I think of the middle school. God, how many clubs are in the middle school, and how many opportunities, you know, just like, you know, you name it, we'll get a club for it. This is how terrific that is. Others? Okay. So move on to district reports. So we have the math report, right?
So I would introduce the math team. I'd ask you to come up to the podium. As the board knows, the district has been studying and deliberating and ultimately deciding over about 18 months. It was a wonderful endeavor that involved both elementary schools and the fifth grade at the middle school to come to consensus around a program that they would like to use district-wide. Dennis has been the chair, and as you can see, as the teachers come up, it was a rich committee, 14 teachers, three administrators, working tirelessly to get to the place where they are tonight, where they're going to recommend a program. So Dennis.
Okay. First, unintended positive outcome is the work at the middle school constructing a new sandbox helped the math program at Mohermit. And I'm going to ask fourth graders to tell me how many grains of sand were put in the sandbox. And I suspect some of them could come up with it, at least an estimate. It was about 13, 14 months ago where we gathered together and asked, the first question we asked is, why in the name of God are we doing this? And we brainstormed, we went through two or three meetings, we came up with some key results, and the first significant checkpoint is tonight. We've ended, and are at a beginning, at a beginning. And the purpose statement that we came up with is to ensure ORCSD students' success in achieving mathematical proficiency. That's what we're all about. Every step that we take is towards that goal. And I'd like to steal something from a recent author. I'd like to believe that we're going from good to better. I think once you say you're great, you may not be so great. So I like to think that, as with this district has, as this district has always worked towards, is moving from good to better. And so several people will explain the slides, and we'll tell you what our decision has been.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm going to do better. You've heard a little bit of this before, so it won't be completely unfamiliar to you, what I'm about to say. And I'm going to explain a little bit about the information that we used to finally come up with the decision. That was long, and, you know, come by not without a lot of discussion and debate and questioning. We began last summer really digging into the content, the Common Core standards content of each program that we were looking at by using an IMET instructional materials evaluation tool. And that tool allowed us to pretty objectively look at whether the different programs we were looking at met, were aligned with the new Common Core standards. And it was pretty interesting, because some came up better aligned than others, and so that was kind of our first step. Most of that was completed over the summer and then also into the school year. And then, as we wrapped that up, our next step was to take some time to create a rubric by which to look at different, more quality aspects of the programs. And that was, some of the items on that rubric were things like, how teacher-friendly is it? How kid-friendly is it? What's the technology like? And, you know, and a myriad of different things that we looked at. And that was not done just by the committee, whereas the IMET was. That was done by grade levels. So grade levels were given time to meet and really, you know, look through this rubric and kind of score programs. That was also a part of a half-day that we took to dig through them and look at more deeply the way lessons were laid out, and whether we felt like there was enough differentiation in each program, and things like that. At the same time, there were teachers that were on the committee that were contacting other schools that were using some of these programs, either through the phone, through phone calls. I actually called somebody in New York, because I felt very compelled to have a conversation with somebody that had been using the Eureka program, who had, which is obviously was originally being used in New York. And so it was neat to call somebody and say, you've been working and using this in New York, and what's that experience been like for you? So, and then some, also some teachers visited districts around here that were using some of the other programs that we checked out. Finally, one of the last pieces was that we had representatives from the companies or organizations come and present or answer questions about the programs for us. And that was helpful, because after all of the deliberation and looking and digging and comparing, and it was, at first, something that we thought maybe we wouldn't need to do, but in the end, it turned out that it was very valuable information for us. And so I don't think anyone could say that we went into this decision without a good look.
Hi. So then, the math committee met to debrief the meetings that we had with the representatives of each of the programs we were considering. Also, some committee members piloted parts of the programs. We wanted to feel what it felt like to teach with the program, and so we had many meetings discussing all of that work. And then our final meeting, until the ones that are coming up, our 14 teachers and three administrators voted by ballot, and to see which program came out on top, and the majority of people voted for Eureka. So our next step was, the math committee met to discuss things that we can do to implement the new resource. How can we help educate staff members about our chosen program? And we've started that work already this week.
So we did decide to go with the Eureka Math Program, and we wanted to tell you a little bit about what Eureka is. It's a program that's actually designed pre-K through grade 12. We're working on this right now, from kindergarten through grade five for our district. It's a curriculum that also incorporates professional development and follows a focus and a coherence that goes along with the Common Core state standards, which our state of New Hampshire has adopted, and really has a sequence of skills that build upon one another, so that we're making sure there aren't gaps in moving on before that skill is mastered.
Eureka was designed after the Common Core was adopted or created. So there, the people that wrote the program were teachers. They got input from the people that created the Common Core. So it was a much more, they really kind of, that was the point, purpose of the program, was to kind of create something that fit the needs of the Common Core curriculum. So it follows good, and they tried to make it, like you said, just a real kind of smooth transition from one grade to the next, and still implement that, which is kind of what they've come up with, from what we can tell.
So a little bit of background to Eureka mathematics. The state of New York, when they adopted Common Core, they had looked to develop a curriculum for the state of New York, and they had received a Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation grant, and then sought to look at who would write their curriculum. Great Minds was formerly known as Common Core, Inc. They changed their names once the Common Core came about, because people were confusing them with the Common Core state standards. They're now called Great Minds. They're a nonprofit organization that primarily, most of their writers are teachers, and the writers are currently teaching and using this tool. So there have been a lot of adaptations and reworking of some of the initial work that was created for New York, and they create different updates. Recently, as recent as this March, independent study was done by edreport.org, and I've included that in the backup. And this is a slide that also shows there were several different programs that were looked at by this independent group of teachers to examine alignment to the Common Core. It's one of the first types of reports that was done, independent of the publishing company who publishes the resource. So it was interesting, as we were finishing up our process, this report was coming out. And so it does show that Eureka, out of all the tools that claimed to be aligned in Common Core material, Eureka was the only one that met the criteria of that group, and it goes a little more in-depth into the report, but I thought that was information that would be useful to the board.
Next steps for support. Materials, oh yes, lots of materials. All classroom teachers, but also special educators, ESOL, and tutors will receive printed teacher materials and student materials. Students will have one workbook or journal per unit or module. And teachers get far more than a traditional teacher addition. There's so many things. There's pacing guides, scope and sequence guides, daily lesson plans, practice papers, assessments, homework, parent letter, and probably many more that I don't know yet. There's an online teacher subscription with flip charts and videos, student activity site, and again, more. Every classroom will get a set of manipulatives, a kit. And so that's really so that we're going to start, we're going to have everything that we need right there for us. So kind of talking about things like scales and pattern blocks and cubes and tiles, and at my grade level, it even includes Play-Doh. Professional development opportunities, of course, to prepare for implementation. Actually, we began this week with half-day meetings for grade-level teams, and Ellen Irvin and Carolyn were with us to meet and get started talking about the materials, and just start the conversation about what we're looking at and where we're going. June 22nd and 23rd and 24th, Oyster River is hosting what's being called the Eureka Summer Institute, which will be far more intensive training, taking a deeper look at the mathematical concepts and the instructional strategies that we'll be using. And there will be writers and teachers there from Eureka. And I also believe there will be staff there from perhaps another school will be joining us, or maybe two. There's, we've been given opportunity for independent study this summer, as also small groups or teams will be working together this summer for ongoing professional development. And then there's always what is called the online professional development through Eureka, which is, there are these great on-demand video series that we can take a look at any time and other resources. And clearly, we're just learning about all that's out there for us. It's a lot.
Technological nerd. These are the committee members, and you can see the diversity. There is no substitute for a good plan and a lot of brain power. And that's what we have, a good plan and a lot of brain power. So now we're open to any questions.
So would the team just stand up, so the board can address their questions? Come right up to the podium? And if you are answering, we just speak into the microphone, because we're recording.
Maybe you all introduce yourselves, make sure everybody, so they'll just say, hey, you.
I'm Trish Hawley. I teach first grade at Mohermit.
Deb Colby Ernst in kindergarten at Mastway.
Carolyn, I think we know.
Jane Windsor, Mohermit, second, going to third next year.
Dave Montgomery, teach fifth grade. Thank you. And I think we know you too. Okay. So Denise, did you have a question?
Well, Al, I think it was first.
So my question is, you kind of summed up with that huge pile of material you're going to get, and you have the summer stuff. So in the fall, when you finally start doing this, are you going to build in some professional development time or something like that, so you can, because once you start actually doing it, and you find like, oh yeah, that doesn't actually work so well, is there enough time to actually kind of reflect on it?
We have a meeting scheduled for Monday with the group. We are not closing down shop. This group will be together for three years. And one of the major questions that already has come up in the work that people have done this week is, we need to get in the back plan, how are you going to evaluate at the end of two to three years?
Denise?
So my question is, I heard workbooks, and maybe talk a little bit about what the students, is it, are there textbooks, or are they just works? You know, you talked about workbooks. Are they consumable? Kind of just maybe talk a little bit about that.
So there are workbooks available for students to use, and teacher books, of course. And it's, the interesting thing about the Eureka program, though, is that you can actually just print the whole thing offline and down. So if you want, you have the choice to use a student journal, or you can just make reproducibles and use them that way. Can you ask your question again? So I'm sure I'm answering it.
Well, I guess, just used to having, you know, students go
I guess, just used to having, you know, students go home sort of with worksheets for homework and things like that. And just maybe, you know, how is that with this new math program? How is that going to work, I guess?
So I think these are some of the questions we're going to be kind of being able to answer as we begin to use some of these materials. We're unclear still whether the homework papers that would be included in the student journal, whether they're perforated or not, could be torn out. They could be photocopied and sent home. I think, personally, I mean, my opinion would be sending the student journal home could be tricky because then if they don't come back for the next day, I don't know how well that would work. It'd just stall everything. So I think, I think it would probably look pretty similar homework to what it looks like now. And again, you know, how grade levels choose to implement homework will probably be different per grade level. But I don't think it will look entirely different. And it won't be, there are really nice parent supports available. Actually, there's nice literature that can actually go home for parents about each module or unit. And there's also online components for parents to get support for maybe how to help their child with something or understand why a concept is being taught a certain way.
Okay.
Trish, what you just said just triggered a thought. This is a change for the district. Are we doing any outreach to the parents that's informing them that a change is occurring? And what to see, what to expect? I think that might...
Sure. One of the discussions we've been having across the half-days, where grade-level meeting, grade-level teams have been meeting, is what kind of communication and how will we inform the community about the change in mathematics? First is to do, use school messenger as a vehicle to reach out and inform the broader community that we've made a change in mathematics and what the program is, and to provide resources on explaining the program. But then, like Trish had said, we also have parent letters. And there's been some discussion at each grade level about what is the agreement around, should all of us agree in this first year especially, to send out a parent letter prior to the start of a new module to allow for parents to have this consistency of information so they're being informed? And the newsletters, I have to say, are really informative about what different models they'll see, what the students will be learning, vocabulary that they'll be hearing from their students, information about the standards, and then even where they can go to seek more information about Eureka itself, if they want to learn more about what this new program is that students are using this year. There's also been discussion about having a few forums where parents can come together and ask questions, and we can show materials and allow them to see the format of a lesson. There's a lot of differentiation that can happen within these modules. We've been discussing even on the homework, while we've had a discussion at each grade level about homework, we've also, through these discussions about Eureka, we've also talked about how everyone uses homework a little differently. And so even though there are homework pages, people may decide, just like they do now, what best suits their grade level and also their class. So even though we have a consistent set of materials for each classroom, teachers get to use the materials how they feel best meets the needs of their class. And I really like that. We just were clear about making sure we were outfitting a classroom, so there was a lot of equity for each classroom, so.
Sarah?
First, thank you all for, I know, all of the time and thought that this took and for being brave enough to make this change. I know that is sometimes hard and quite a daunting task. Carolyn, is there any, do you guys get any say in the, that professional development, that two-day thing, in the style that they're going to sort of present to you? Or do they come in and sort of say, "This is how we're presenting?" Just, I ask because I think with, I've looked at Eureka online and the types, the type of curriculum it is. And I think the most powerful professional development I've been part of with a kind of program like this that is so new, is where they come in and actually do a lesson. I mean, the staff is there and you're doing the lesson. And obviously, you don't have time to do all the lessons for the entire year, but to do, you know, take one module and do two lessons out of that and talk about the ones in between. So do you know if they're going to...
One of the things that we have done is to, what I brought to the Eureka team are the concerns that our committee had, what were the committee voiced as, what about the first year of implementation? What about pacing in the first year? How do we navigate some of the material? It is, when they put an estimated number of days per module, we know in an implementation year that there's some concern. Well, how do you do that? And all, well, let's look at snow days. And so how do you work within a new material and figure out how to put, focus on the major work of that module and what can kind of move to the side this first year and still make it meaningful? We've discussed that. As well as how to navigate the new format of a lesson. There's concern about being in a half-day kindergarten format, so that's being addressed as well. And how that, what are the implications for kindergartners moving into first grade, where the program assumes they'll come in with a full-day kind of kindergarten content? And so how do we make adjustments and make the tool work for us with our unique concerns here at Oyster River? So that's how we've approached that.
Great, thanks.
Also, a good, a good indicator of how it's going to work is what we just did this week was planned by the committee as a way of moving forward and getting, because the 23rd and 24th, for example, I'm going to be in North Carolina and some other people are going to be other places. But a good, how many people were able to sign up?
Fifty.
Fifty people from the district have signed up for the workshop. So it will be significant, and it will answer a lot of questions. But moving forward, this committee is not going to disappear, and it's going to have a very forceful voice in whatever professional development we do.
I had a question.
Could you just piggyback on that, too? The professional development we'll be doing will be in grade-level spans, correct? So K-2, so it will be specific to grade levels, not, you know, general. So, yeah.
I had a question, is conceptually, how's this different than what's been happening before? What's the, what's the difference?
Other than Common Core alignment.
Well, I know just from the classroom, the teaching point of view, the consistency is really different. Because the way with everyday math being a K-5 at a unit, then when they went from five to six, there was a whole shift and it, there was a big gap there between the two. So we actually in fifth grade had to switch and sort of do a little of both for a while and that, to sort of get them so they're ready for sixth grade and stuff. So that was always an issue. And that was a few years ago. And now we've sort of changed again. And every time, there's been like the elementary program, then there was like this fifth-grade middle school program, then there was this seventh, eighth-grade program, and then, so there was always these different pieces that didn't always jive. And I think that's, for me, I think that's a lot of where things were missed. So this program uses similar language, similar style of, say, the problem-solving models, the different models they use. I think that, Sonny's not here, but I think there's 10 different models, K-12, different ways to go about looking at a problem. And they're always the same 10 models. So there's, just the consistency is so much more that each, though theoretically, that's going to make life much easier.
If I could piggyback Dave's answer, Tom, I think the magnificent thing about this group in the work they did was that they attacked it from a K-through-five perspective. So not only are the two elementary schools going to be aligned for the first time, but the fifth-grade transition was built right in. So this is a pretty amazing group of people. When we look at it from kindergarten to grade 5, that alone really made the difference. And that really speaks to Dave's issue on consistency. Other?
I just want to echo what Sarah said, first of all. I, you know, really appreciate the effort and the leadership that you all have, you know, added to this process. So Trish, you said something that, you know, got me thinking about the implementation of the program. You had called someone in New York who uses the program. Going forward, looking ahead to implementation, do you, or can you all speak to what you envision doing in terms of continuing the process of, you know, peer-to-peer interaction, especially with districts that are sort of ahead of Oyster River in this process? What lessons have they learned? What sorts of things that they not anticipate? Are there, you know, are there forums online where you can easily communicate with one another? If you could just talk a little bit about that.
Because I'm going to forget my answer if I don't. The one, we did start looking into that, and we found a couple websites. One of the schools we use was talking about a forum they have where people just download flip charts and things that they know. So everything's out there, it's kind of like a help forum. People have a question, exactly what you would be looking for if you're looking for support from, quote, you know, other places. And then I found a website that is just chock-full of like every grade broken down, every resource for every module. And I haven't even begun to look at it, scares me. But if they're out there, and that's, I think, part of the way this program's looked. So that's what I plan to be doing and try to get that to everybody here.
One of the districts that we visited was Newburyport, and they have been using it this year. And so it is quite new to them. But already, you know, just going there for one day, they were like, "Well, this is what we found, and this is what we're going to try and do different." So I think they will be attending, I believe, the Summer Institute in June. And so I think we'll be able to forge some connections there, which will be really nice.
And Concord and Hampton.
Concord and Hampton, too. So that's pretty, that's pretty great. And I, you know, I think that also all of the teachers who are, you know, looking at this like, "Wow, this is a really big deal. This is a really big deal. This is a big change that we're making." And I think it's quite daunting for every teacher involved, quite frankly. I think that what that can also do is really have teachers reaching out to each other, you know, do things like, "Hey, can you come watch me teach this lesson and, you know, observe me? See, am I getting these questions out right?" Or, you know, comparing our data and how we feel like lessons went, our concepts learned. And so I think, I think, you know, we're, those are the kinds of things we'll be talking about a lot as the committee continues to meet and we plan RPD.
Any questions? Well, thank you for all your work. I appreciate it.
I can't forget to thank you for the money.
And we spent every dollar of it.
Okay, Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, I mean, Mr. Chair. I'm going to invite Dave Harley and Brendan to the podium with me. So I don't know, Tom, if I just promoted you or not, or demoted you.
He gave me a raise.
Let our tech guy get us to the next PowerPoint.
Which one?
The one on absenteeism. Fantastic, thank you. We received a letter in March that was a letter of concern about teacher absenteeism. And it was actually a concern that I shared with both of these gentlemen as co-presidents of the guild in the very first months that I was superintendent. When I looked at the data, it seemed unusually high, and both Dave and Brendan were open to the conversation. And so we began a conversation three years ago, the letter we received was three months ago. So clearly, it was an issue that we, the three of us, found as a concern when we started working together. So every other year, the district does a report to the Office of Civil Rights, and they request data on teacher absenteeism. And in between, those are development years where you're developing the data. What the specific question is, is how many staff are absent 10 or more times in a year? And when we started working together, you know, and I shared the data, we were actually built a spreadsheet or had a spreadsheet built to try to get a handle on, you know, why teacher absenteeism appeared to be so high. So literally, this has been, at this point, almost a three-year process, considering I came in in July, we're one month short of having this be a three-year discussion. But it really wasn't, it didn't dawn on me until we got the letter in March that the data that was being used, that we originally started having this conversation about, could have been an error. However, having said that, we didn't know it at the time, and we worked together, the guild and administration, to address what we thought was a concern. It was a concern, but it wasn't nearly as big a concern as was presented in the March letter to the board and to me. And I'll explain that as we go through. So to say that, you know, it would be easy for management and the union to be on polar opposite sides on an issue. What really transpired was we worked as colleagues. I cannot tell you how many times Dave Hawley said in the conversation over a three-year period, "This is an important issue to the guild as well as to management." I mean, for management, it's loss of instructional time. Well, guess what? For the guild, that's also a major issue. You know, for management, it's a cost issue. It's, there's an enormous amount of money we set aside for substitutes. And for the guild, if we're spending more money on substitutes, there's less money to spend on supplies, materials, and negotiated pay increases. So finding common ground on this issue was relatively easy. When we actually negotiated a successor agreement in the midst of our discussion, the board negotiating team found the guild more than receptive to addressing one of our concerns, which was the use of personal time in the district. We had a very generous personal day clause in our contract. We historically have allowed teachers to take up to six days in personal time, which basically means if they have an issue that they needed to address, they would be absent and we would be hiring a substitute. And we found that there were a number of staff who were using 100% of their personal time. So what that said to me was that people were defining liberally the term "personal time" when, in our discussions, we were talking about it in terms of what was the historical basis for why we put personal time in the contract. And again, guild and in myself had no disagreement, even though I wasn't here. The premise that we put forward was personal time was there to be used when something could not be done other than during an instructional day. A mortgage closure is an example. You know, you can't control that. Or, you know, a death in the family, because we didn't have bereavement days in the contract at that point. But still, when we looked at it and we negotiated with the board, when it became formal, what you found was a guild that was receptive to the idea of reducing the number of personal days from six to four, because they shared the same concern that it was being interpreted too liberally by staff. But also, when we talked about it, we talked about not using it for the extension of vacation time. Because when we looked at the use of personal time, we were seeing a lot of it being used to extend a holiday weekend or a vacation. And we knew collectively that that wasn't the intent, because fortunately, we had somebody in the guild who literally had negotiated these parts of the contract. And since I wasn't here, he was very forthright, Doug Hoff, about sharing with all three of us what the intent of language was. So ultimately, that was a major reduction and a benefit that the guild had. And what we did was we did put in bereavement time. And what we've seen is a huge reduction in the amount of personal time being used in the district. So the reason I share all of this is, even though you received the letter in March, this had been an issue that leadership in the district and leadership in the guild thought was serious enough to be a major ongoing discussion over a three-year period. So in the letter you received, it indicated that in 2010-11, 64% of our staff used 10 or more days being they were absent. And the following year, it was 47%. Now, again, I have to preface this, I wasn't here in either of those two years. But this is what happened. It's one of those stories where you're sitting there, and I was at Mohermit School at a math training around April, so it was after the letter came in. training around April, so it was after the letter came in. And we had an incredible PD component going on. It was an instructional day, and it was on math. And I looked across the room, and there were probably eight teachers in the room. And I thought, okay, so if these eight teachers are sitting here getting this really good professional development in math, that means there's eight substitutes in this building right now. And it dawned on me, how is that being recorded? So I went back to the district, and I went downstairs and asked Michelle, are you, are you making a distinction between professional development time and sickness or personal Her response was, nobody's asked me for that distinction. I send the data up upstairs to Janet, and she fills out the OCR report. So what I suspect has happened historically is that the data that was being entered was being entered erroneously, because the OCR report separates professional development time from sick and personal time. In other words, you're not supposed to be reporting professional development time. They want to know who's out because they're ill or who's out because of personal time. So, you know, you have the letter. It demonstrated a pretty significant absenteeism rate. And then we sat down, and actually, we invited Tom into this meeting, because we wanted to get guidance on the report that you would like to see. But he, we also wanted to share to the Chair what we were observing. Because what we did was we actually then went back to 2012-13, because we can't go back beyond that, because none of us were here. So we can't reconstruct what happened. But we can construct what's happened since the three of us have worked together. And so I said in 2012-13, this became a discussion of Guild leadership and administration. And the first year wasn't a mind blower. When we applied the OCR criteria, we were able to demonstrate there was a reduction in the first year. It went down to 40.4%, and this, remember, is 10 or more absences. We applied the same criteria, and now we had been working for a year together around this issue, and it had reduced to 32.5%, 10 or more absences. And then, at the point that we were building this, this was in response to the request by the Board to provide information that we're providing tonight, when we looked at 2014-15, using March 21st, could have been any date, I could have updated it to today, but since this is the data that we'd been working with, I felt it was better to be consistent. So as of March 21st, our absentee rate for 10 or more days is down to 13.9%. So as Dave or the math people who are up here would share with you, trend data is three or more years. So we're almost at the end of three years of effort by Guild leadership and administration to make a decided decision around absenteeism. And by the way, I didn't mention that we entered into a side agreement letter that has been distributed to all staff with the understanding of how personal time is to be used with the cooperation of the Guild. So every staff member this year received a letter from me saying, these are the rules of the road using personal time. And if there's going to be any exceptions to the use, it no longer can be addressed at the building principal level. It comes to me. Then I can, what I do is I make my decision, and I send these two guys a copy of my decision. So they can see that I'm following the letter and the intent of our agreement. They also can see where I divert with purpose. For example, you know, a person can't control when a child is chosen to be married, and so, you know, there may be an exception, but the only person making that exception in the district now is me. So we don't have four different cooks in the pot. We just have one. So you can see that it's had a dramatic difference. You can see how well Guild leadership and administration have worked together. And, you know, quite frankly, what I did was I took the raw data, and I gave it to Brendan. Brendan's our high school math person, so that it didn't look like I was cooking the books. It's always nice to be able to see the same thing. I did it in my office. Brendan did it in his, in his office. And we shared our results, and we came up with the same conclusion. We're seeing dramatically lowered absenteeism across the district, especially as it relates to personal time and the 10-plus days of being absent. So we're here, really, to answer any additional questions that the Board may have. I would tell you that all of the data is based on what we would have reported had we had to report in a given year. We use that exact same criteria, remembering that we don't report every single year. So we are open to questions. You can ask Dave, Brendan, or me.
Maria?
Maria?
Since I'm clueless on many things, reduction, I understand. The percentage of what?
The percentage of staff who use 10 or more days they're absent from their classroom.
In a year?
In a, in a given year.
For sickness.
For sickness or personal time combined.
Okay.
Just sickness also includes maternity leave and extended illnesses. So those numbers are also included in that data.
And I think you, didn't you subtract that, and it was something like 8%? If you take out?
I did, and I, did you?
I didn't, I'm sorry. But what would happen in any given year is, the current year, it dropped in half when we used maternity, paternity, and illnesses that brought a teacher out of the classroom. In the two previous years, it dropped by about eight points.
And thank you very much for kind of going into this, and certainly appreciate that the numbers are now accurate. However, I would still think it'd be important to know at some, in some way, in terms of number of days for professional development, and not to say that that isn't important, particularly like with this new math curriculum and all of that, I can appreciate that. But to me, it's still an important piece, because those teachers are still out of the classroom, and there are still stuffs. So I just wonder if you'll keep track of, you know?
We do. We are absolutely taking care, taking track of that, Denise, it's just in terms of this particular report. It wasn't relevant, but we have kept accurate. When we bring in, like if Brendan's gone to a workshop, and even if it's in the building, we have it recorded, so we know exactly. And we changed, when we first came in to the district, there was a lot of out-of-district workshops going on, so, and it was less focused on our, on our district needs and more focused on a particular staff member's needs. As we've moved forward in time, and the math curriculum is a good example of this, we focused a lot of quality staff development inside the district, around district initiatives, which isn't to say we've eliminated the idea of somebody leaving the district, but we've become much more strategic in how we're applying professional development time in the district.
Al?
I just want to say, I'm really happy the way you guys handled this, because when that letter came out, there's a lot of districts that would have a really knee-jerk reaction to it, and how they handled it would not necessarily be the most, you know?
Well, their knee on jerk.
No, the most beneficial way. I mean, you tend to make these snap decisions that don't necessarily solve what is a problem. So I, I'm happy the way you handle it, and it's good to see that the teachers and the administration are working well together, because there's certainly many problems we face down the road that are complex, and the stronger their relationship is, the better we'll be able to handle them.
Well, sad note on that, Al, is both these guys are term limited, term limited out. They're happy about it. I'm not so much, but I'm sure that they'll help me transition to new leadership. And, you know, that's a critically important component of improvement in the district. We need to be, and you saw it with the math committee, you know, joining hands with our staff when we're resolving problems, because if you're not working with them, the problem gets worse, it doesn't get better.
Okay.
Maybe it's been done already, and I don't know if it should be done. Does it make sense to send your presentation to Dr. Sharp and Seaman and?
Yeah, I wanted to present it to you guys first, and I was gonna let Jason have it tomorrow.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions? Stan?
Very quickly, just to echo, you know, I'm just very pleased to hear the collaborative approach that you all took to handling this. In terms of lessons learned, and I may have missed it, so I apologize if I did. The, I think we have some old data in some of the supporting documentation here, which showed from '09-10 to '11-12, the middle school seemed to stay at a pretty high level. And I wonder, is that, is that a trend? Was that an outlier? Are there still outliers in terms of percentages?
Yeah, when you look at the four buildings, what I do is I compare the middle school and high school, and then the two elementary schools, largely because it's closer to apples to apples in terms of size of staff and demand on staff. And there's no question that we still have work to do in the middle school in particular. So that is our outlier, and we all know it, and it's being addressed. You know, the fact, you know, that we do, what's different now than, than three years ago is, you know, Jay calls a staff member and just says, are you okay? Because, you know, it's just really just a touching base. You've been out, I want to make sure you're okay. Not so much, you know, to be big brother, but to find, you know, to see if there's a concern that he needs to be aware of. And again, you know, the Guild understands what we're doing, and they're supportive of it. We're not trying to be mean spirited, but we are trying to hold people more accountable than when I came in. So you've seen a decrease at the middle school, but in relative terms to the high school, which is, I consider its peer, there's still work to do there.
And just to follow up, so one of the things that that suggests to me is there are obviously a lot of variables that can contribute to higher levels in any given location. Given that one of our goals is looking at the future of the middle school, and some of the things that we heard in the presentation a couple of weeks ago about the, you know, how the, how the, the physical plant, so to speak, supports learning, I, I hope that we continue to look at that higher rate of absenteeism in the context of how this environment is supporting learning, supporting the people who work here. You know, are there environmental factors that we may not be looking closely at enough, whether they be illness, stress-related? We heard about the excessive noise, just based on the fact of the way the building's laid out. So I think this is, I think, a good opportunity for us to sort of build that into something else that we're looking at.
Good point. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Sorry didn't give you so much.
Okay, so we get a less, less friendly note, though. Smarter Balance testing opt-out?
So what has happened, we just want to make sure the Board's aware, and Todd, you might want to come up to the podium. He alluded to it earlier. Smarter Balance at the high school has been parents sending letters to myself and Todd and Carolyn, basically saying, I refuse to have my child tested. There is no opt-out provision, so I just really want to make that clear tonight. We, as administrators, cannot condone a parent saying, I want to opt out. What we are doing is saying, if a parent says, I refuse to have my child tested, we're not duct taping a kid to a chair and saying, pretend you're taking the test. What we've seen at the high school is a dramatic decrease in juniors and an increase in parent letters coming in, indicating that parents do not want their child tested. Couple of factors that we think are playing into that, of course, is the fact that the state is investigating an alternative with smarter balance at the high school. So people are connecting the dots, saying, well, how useful is this one year's worth of data if we do SAT? And the other piece, and Todd alluded to this, is the number of hours that juniors are being tested. Another advantage of the SAT is a giant reduction in hours of testing for, for our juniors. And then the other piece was, and Todd alluded to this, was timing. You know, we thought, we thought it was a good decision at the time to push everything towards the end of the school year to give our kids as much skill as they could possibly have to be successful, but that compounds into the issue of all the other assessments that juniors are taking. So Todd, do you want to add anything more?
I would, I would just add that we follow the recommendations of the Smarter Balance test. They suggested the high school do all of its testing between the six weeks at the end of the 12-week window, which basically was our April vacation through the first week of June. Combine that with science kneecaps that were mandated to happen between the 4th and the 21st of May, and that AP testing had to happen between the 4th and the 15th of May, and that SATs are offered on May 2nd and June 6th, and ACTs or SATs. So many kids, particularly those that are, the highest, the highest rate of the refusals are kids that are very highly, high motivated, high achieving students. It is a large percentage of those. And the reason I'm getting from families is, my kid's gonna take ACTs or SATs, they don't need this. And it didn't, quite frankly, it didn't help when we had a technological malfunction on Friday that basically caused me to, basically breakfast was on Mr. Allen for the juniors, because it was like, guys, I'm sorry, there's the systems now, we cannot test. So, so it didn't, that certainly didn't help matters. So it created, it added to that feeling of, we're, we're, we're losing instructional time. So, so yeah, so all of that together kind of created the perfect storm. As of this morning, I had 48 refusals.
I would add, just into that report, that, you know, our community is going to wonder how our students are doing against other students. We have always compiled our SAT data, and we continue on our SAT to outperform New Hampshire as a state and the United States as a country. We'll, we'll provide that data to parents, you know, communatively next year. And the reason I say that is our Smarter Balance data at the high school will be useless, and not, you couldn't compare it to anyone. So we still have our SAT data, which will provide us a measure of, of how we're doing against the state and nation.
I, it certainly will be useless as a tool to compare our school to other schools. It won't be useless for the individual student, it will be valid for those students who took the test. So it still will be potentially useful for an individual.
Thanks.
It just will not, when you're trying to compare, where does Oyster River factor in against Hanover, Exeter, and so forth? It won't give us any useful information.
Thanks, guys.
Well, I'm just wondering if you've heard from any other school districts, have other districts had a sort of a similar response? If you've heard anything?
Yeah, I, I was, I did speak with the Exeter principal last week, and he did indicate that they had a fairly high rate. He, he wasn't able to quantify it yet, but it was a fairly high rate. And in the Manchester schools, I know they've had a high rate of refusal. I mean, it is a nationwide thing. You know, there was a school in Seattle, Nathan Hale High School, 100% of the juniors refused to take the test.
Camden Rockport, Maine, 50% of them refused.
And I would, I guess one of the things, on a positive note, the kids who are taking the test are taking it very seriously. I will tell you, I'm, I, you know, it's hard, it's even hard for me to go in and say, come on, guys, you know, give it your best, but they, they're taking the test, and they're taking the approach of, look, if this is a test of my abilities, I'm gonna do my best on it. So I've got kids, like we did testing yesterday, where I unfortunately had to pull kids out of US History, thank you, Dave Holly, to do it, but there were kids who actually tested during their entire US History class through another hour, and then there were kids who were coming back for some more to do makeup. And it would have been very easy for a kid to say, well, Jason, this, everybody seems to be, I'll just go through and collect the answers, but they're not doing that. The kids that are taking the test are taking the test, which is, is nice to see. It shows that our kids, when they do something, they put their best foot forward, so.
Are we done with this? And we, are we done with this?
I'll stop talking.
Yes, we are. This is the last hurrah for Smarter Balance in the district.
Really?
Tara?
We had heard before that a high refusal rate could possibly impact our funding. Is that going to happen?
You know, it wasn't, the, the high refusal rate would have been organized at a school board level, and that's what Manchester was facing initially. They were telling the state they were gonna refuse to participate. And organizationally, the commissioner had no choice but to say, well, as a school district, if you refuse to participate, then you're putting your federal money in jeopardy. This wasn't an organized effort by the district, and so I suspect that because... This wasn't an organized effort by the district, and so I suspect that because of what's happening across our state and across the country, that there will be a high press to do much. The other thing that I would add, although significant, it's not overwhelming in our district. For Manchester, federal funding is tens of millions of dollars. For our district, it's $600,000, give or take. So it's a much smaller part of our overall budget. Not that I'm encouraging it to be kept, but I don't see that happening, Sarah.
Okay.
I just have a question. Todd, other than those 47, the rest of the students completed the entire test?
They will when they finish makeups. Yes, we still, we have until Friday, so I have seven or eight that I'm still scheduled.
Okay, almost done now.
Could we have five minutes?
Sure. Okay. What?
Taking five.
We'll take five minute, five-minute break right now, because we're done with this, this section. Okay? Where's Sarah?
Evaluations.
Okay, reassemble and teacher evaluation.
Oh, wait, no, budget process.
I'm sorry. Budget process calendar, way off. So Sue?
Can never be done with budget.
Yeah.
Just wanted to get this calendar out to you so you can plan accordingly. FY '17 schedule? Scary, huh? I moved the dates up, and the reason we did that is because every year, we give you the budget, and we say, "By the way, we just got the health rates, and it's all going to change." So hopefully with this date, we'll have the numbers with the health rate, and we'll have to make a drastic change. Questions?
Questions?
Comments?
Could we have a motion to approve this budget calendar, then? Al?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget calendar.
Moved by Al, seconded by Dan. And we're third. So discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Student Senate report?
All right, so right now in the Senate, oh, it's really loud. We're preparing for our elections for next year, so on Friday, during our office hours period, that there's, there's class meetings where all the individual classes will meet, and we're going to have elections there for president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, and four senators for each class. We're also in the process of making changes to Spirit Week, to make it a safer day and create a better environment, while still having all the fun that Spirit Week brings and maintaining the positive school spirit that we have. And so that's what we're working on right now.
Great, thanks very much.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I was reading in a paper that there's a big environmental effort to save the Bobcats in New Hampshire, and I was wondering if the Student Senate somehow could make some kind of statement support for this, or think about it, since we are the Bobcats.
I can do that, yes.
Okay, we move to teacher evaluation. My understanding is this has to be approved by the end of this month, right? There's a real tight deadline.
There's absolutely a deadline, and this is work that the Guild and administration have been working on since August.
Okay. Todd?
As Jim just pointed out, this is a committee that's been working since last August to really take a look at our, our teacher evaluation program and come up with a plan that will then be basically blended with our professional development plan, so that hopefully it's for, from a professional side, it's kind of one-stop shopping, so there's not multiple processes that they're trying to deal with, and hopefully it will also make us more efficient, more focused, and so forth. So it's been a committee we've been working on all year. We have, it's a committee that represented professional staff as well as administrative staff. Dave Hawley is here to represent the, the teacher side, and I'm here on the administrative side. David, do you want to just kind of run through the?
Yeah, absolutely. This is actually the most amount of time I've spent in front of a school board in my career. So I'm glad it's one-stop shop for me. Anyhow, I, this, this committee was fantastic. We had representation from every school. So in the elementary schools, we had Doug Hoff, who was an excellent contribution to the committee, as well as Rebecca Yurkies. And then from the middle school, we had Chris Hall, and at the high school, we had Sean Kelly. And I was on board as well, just to be the fifth member and to smile and add my two cents.
And Dave did more than smile, but he was a highly valuable member. On the administrative side, we had Carrie Vaseh from Mastway, we had obviously myself, Jay Rashard from Middle School, Mark Milliken, Dean of Faculty at the high school, as well as Carolyn Eastman. So the 10 of us, you know, got, spent a lot of quality time together over the course of the year. Just to kind of run through, we're running through the presentation that we did with our professional staff a few weeks ago, so I'm going to run through it fairly quickly. Basically, we looked at the steps in the evaluation process. We, we really didn't want to radically change the model, but we wanted to change, like I said, the blending of it. So the basic three steps are the same as, as they've always been. Starts with a goal-setting process at the beginning of the year, that, which we'll talk about in a second. Then there's obviously a supervision process involving a supervisor, and then the end, there's a, there's a summative process at the end of the year that each staff member receives a summative evaluation for the year. You want to jump in on this?
Yeah, sure. And then we, we identified six categories for best practices for faculty, and this is rarely where the lion's share of the work happened, outside of this one little component of 20% data, which we'll get to later. But we went through and made the document of best practices really Oyster River-esque, and made sure that it was representative of our value system. And so you can see those six categories, and there's bullet points underneath each one of those categories, which were part of the evaluation process.
And I believe in the backup you have, you have the detailed, what we call the, the Oyster River standards of best practice. We'll give you the 10, 12 indicators in each category. Starting in the goal-setting process, basically what we're trying to do is make sure the goal-setting process has focus to it. So one goal has to be related to some district-level initiative. Another goal has to be related to a building-level initiative, and then, as a professional, you can choose a third goal that really is about your own personal professional development. And basically, the sources for those goals would be strategic plan, both district and building level, and then obviously the standards of best practice, which really tries to define what, what are the things we're looking for in an effective teacher in the district. Okay? You want me to keep going? You want to take this?
I can do the, I'll do the formal one. I can do the walkthrough. So the, we're keeping the formal observation for several reasons. One, it's, it can be very effective, especially for non-continuing contract teachers, which are those individuals in the first five years of their career. And we'll have this walkthrough model. The formal one is your traditional, you meet with administrator prior to explain the lesson plan. That administrator watches you deliver that lesson plan, and then you have a follow-up meeting with the administrator.
And really, the, the newer concept that we're bringing in is to really make the walkthrough observation an official part of the supervision process. Basically, a walkthrough is, we've defined it as being, you know, at least 10 minutes in length. It's informal in nature, it's not pre-scheduled, but it is generally followed up with communication between the supervisor and the staff member. One of the things that really comes out, when you look at the formal process, is that sometimes the feedback doesn't come back as quickly and as timely as possible, and sometimes it's great to have an immediate conversation about it while it's still fresh in your mind, and we're hoping that that's going to become a, a part of that. We are, one of the things you will not see, because we're going to be working on this over the summer, is we're building the, the platform to go into Oasis or My Learning Plan, is what the teachers use to, to do track their professional development. But it's an, it's an, it'll be an online form that supervisors would be able to use. They'll have an iPad or a smartphone or whatever, and just basically by touching various icons on the screen, they can give feedback fairly quickly on a lesson. You want to jump in on this?
Sure. So continuing contract, not a lot of changes, with the exception of the walkthrough model that's going to happen three times for 10 minutes, which would satiate that requirement in the contract for a 30-minute observation. The only, the slight difference is that it will happen annually versus the biannual observation. And, and to give you some history, the Guild has always advocated for a annual observation of professional staff, because we believe quite strongly in making sure we have proper feedback. And so this was an easy marriage for us.
And, and on the other side, looking at the non-continuing contract people, those teachers that are in that first five years of their teaching career, we wanted to make sure, to make sure that they receive plenty of formal as well as informal feedback. So what we did for them is, basically their year is bookended by formal observations, which would be that pre-conference, observation, post-conference, and then a write-up. But then throughout the year, they'd have at least three informal 10-minute walkthroughs over the course of the year. So really, at the end of the year, minimally, and I want to emphasize minimally, probationary staff member would have a minimum of two full observations plus three walkthroughs, in addition to the various communications that would take place around that. We really think it's going to increase the dialogue. That's, that's really our goal. You want me to keep going on this one?
Sure.
Okay. So anyway, then, then at the end of the year, obviously after all these various data has been collected through this observation process, as well as the staff member also collecting data on themselves, there would be a year-end meeting with the supervisor where you'd, where there'd be a summative evaluation that would be generated. Again, one of the beauties of when we get this platform built through Oasis is that it'll be, again, one-stop shopping. A teacher, when they get to the end of the year, and they're doing a self-reflection, they'll have all of the observations in front of them to be able to look at and, and kind of reflect on as they, as they do that, as well as the supervisor will have it in one place, as opposed to, you know, flipping through a binder and pulling out observations. Jump in.
The major differences are with that walkthrough, and then also we're marrying two different components with the goal-setting. Prior, you had goals for your professional development, and then you had goals for potentially your observation. We've married the state requirements, so that's three goals. It means a district goal, a building-level goal, and a personal goal, and that's all part of your evaluation process. So it really streamlines that, and satisfies the state requirement. And then you have the walkthrough, which is three times. Many models suggested 10 walkthroughs for the course of a given year for 10 minutes, and we really wanted to make sure that whatever we put forward was feasible for administrative staff. That's a lot of work to observe every faculty member 10 times in the course of the year. So three was a great number. It satisfies the language in the contract, and that's pretty much the chief differences.
And actually, one other key difference, which goes back to the goal-setting, because there is the, the, this 20% data requirement, sorry, you want to talk about?
No, no, please do. I just forgot that part.
Because there is the 20%, because there is the 20% data requirement, the way we factored it in is, staff are asked to incorporate a, a data into one of their three goals. So it might be, they might be, for example, they might be involved in helping to review the RTI program in a school, and they might look at the data related to their students to assist them to kind of determine the effectiveness of a measure that they're using. Or they might have a, a personal goal. It might be a teacher that's like, "I want to increase my students' performance on spelling tests, and over the course of the year, I want to see a 20% growth in student spelling test scores." Point being, that, that's, that's really the, one of the pushes from the state level to incorporate data into the process, and we, we actually spent a lot of time talking about this concept, because we are, we're firmly do not want, you know, a, a system where, at the end of the year, every teacher gets a score, and like a year an 87.4, a year a 68.6, or, we didn't want that, because we don't feel that that's really conducive to that collegial cooperative environment. But we did want to make sure we met that, that requirement to incorporate data. So how we've chosen to do it is incorporate it into one of your goals and allow the teachers to be able to kind of determine that in conjunction with the supervisor, so that it can be a personal thing, or it might be a collective thing. It could be, you know, the fifth grade might say, "Gee, we're going to look at our star reading scores, and as a group, we're going to collectively try to accomplish something." So, but that, that's, that's, that's a key difference. And teachers are actually pretty fond of that idea, I think.
Well, it's the flexibility, because not everyone that's on a contract's a teacher, and you need to make sure that you satisfy everybody in the district and their needs. So there is a fair amount of flexibility there, and again, working with the state mandate.
So kind of finally, kind of where, what do we need to do now? We're going, we, we, actually, you can talk about that, because you're.
Yeah, we, we actually had almost unanimous support for the evaluation committee as we presented it to the faculty. I think it was out of 91 respondents, we had 90 that said yes.
So obviously, we, another future work is hopefully going to happen tonight, is your, your blessing of this and so forth. And then assuming that that takes place, obviously, we need to be looking at creating training for staff in the fall to be able to do this, because it is not radically different to what people use, but it is different, and we want to make sure people understand it and can, can work with it. And then obviously, as I've said, we got some work to do with the merging of the two plans and getting that online platform set up so that it's ready to go in the fall. So those are the things we have to do. And we'd be happy to take questions. Kenny?
I just want to thank you for all the work that you did on this. I really like the way it looks, and I'm very glad the faculties endorsed it. I'd also like to thank you for something you didn't do, which is, with that 20% metric that was mandated, you didn't tie it to a standardized test, and I greatly appreciate that.
Thank you.
So we need a motion to approve, if people are ready, a motion to approve this teacher evaluation plan. Al?
I'll make a motion to approve the teacher evaluation plan system.
Moved by Al, seconded by Kenny. Further questions of, yeah, Sarah?
I just have two logistical ones. At the middle school and at the high school, you guys have pretty big staffs. Who does the evaluations of those? Is it just the principal, or is it?
Gosh, no.
I was like, gosh, Todd!
I have to say, I have it probably, I don't want to say this too loud, but probably a little easier than Jay does. I have, you know, Mark Milliken, my dean of faculty, Mike McCann, dean of students, and I have Heather McEnoff in the counseling department, and then Misty Lowe in the special ed. department, and then myself. You know, I supervise 27 staff, and Mark and Mike, 15 to 20. Heather does the counseling department, Misty does the special education department. So it's, it's one of the, I would say, one of the things I really was really pleased with, as these conversations happened, we were all very focused on, we want this to be feasible, we want this to be real, we don't want to come up with a plan that's going to, once again, be ignored, and we wanted it to be, so we, we spent a lot of time saying, "Can you really do this? Is this feasible?" And I think that was something that I really appreciated the Guild involvement in, because in fact, they were asking it more than I was, like, "Todd, can you really do this?" You know, and so we felt confident we could.
Ready to vote? Okay. So the motion is to approve this teacher evaluation plan. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Thank you for all the good work. Okay. Okay, we have to move towards a discussion that was postponed at the last meeting, which is Board Goal Number Three. Maria made this motion, and it's not really an amendment, because there was no motion made, other motion made about Goal Three. So essentially, this is the motion that's on the table, and the motion is, and I think I have this right from the minute, so Maria, correct me if I have it wrong, "To achieve a successful vote on a bond issue in March 2006 to fund an upgrade of existing fields addressing safety and drainage concerns and to add a track. The project will include an artificial turf field constructed with materials that exclude tire crumb rubber." Is that accurate, Maria?
Yep, so right here.
So this is open for discussion. Kenny?
I guess I would open the discussion by jumping ahead to my committee report, but last night, we had a meeting of the entire working group that is looking at the fields project. And within that group, there's a component that's the Sustainable Design Committee, and although they've not formally met, and I think they'll be meeting next week, they put forward some of the alternatives that are there. And I guess I'd like to make two points. One is that we, the alternatives, maybe I'll even say it, nothing is as easy as it looks, and nothing is as perfect as it looks. And, and so going down the list of the alternatives that were alternatives that were cited, one is coconut husk. And a big problem with coconut husk is coconut growing is a big reason for deforestation in Indonesia, and has really wreaked havoc with that country's environmental situation and their social situation. Whether using coconut husk will affect that, as palm oil currently does, I don't know. A second alternative was cork infill. And that, too, has environmental component in growing trees to get their, you strip the bark to get cork. Again, you wind up having these unicultures of agriculture that involve clearing space, growing a crop. Not sure of the effect that that has. There's the Nike grind, and nobody really knows what the Nike grind is at this point. And thinking about whether this is byproducts from their manufacturer, whether this is sneakers that are recycled, what's in those sneakers material-wise, what's the effect, where are the Nikes coming from? So that's a question. And then there's one of thermoplastic polymer, and the track record on that is that starts to congeal after three or four years and doesn't hold up. So the consensus last night was this is really a charge of that subcommittee to evaluate these sorts of possible infills, and to really evaluate them, not just in this limited concept of tire crumb, our fields, our kids, but really looking at it from a global health, environmental standpoint. And we, I think we probably won't pick tires, but I think it really shouldn't be taken out of this subcommittee's hands before they really do the homework and we really come up with a solution that is really most sustainable, not only for Oyster River, but also for the world, and also make sure we're picking something that has a track record. And so 15 years down the line, we're not finding that Nike sneakers and everything that was in them is causing health problems. So I will vote against this. I'd like to strike that last part out about crumb rubber. I'd like that committee, who are filled with very bright people, very energetic people, I'd like to hear their report, and then I think we'll have the final say on what that is, but I don't want to preclude them from doing their research.
Was that an amendment?
No, I was speaking to vote against your proposal.
I thought you said you wanted to exclude that part of the crumb rubber.
I guess I would, I could either do that as an amendment, or I would just make a whole new motion after, you know, maybe the board wants to approve this motion, and then I don't have a stand. But if the board doesn't want to, I would want to have it without that last sentence.
Is that a motion?
What should make the, is that reasonable to make the motion to exclude the last, is it amendment? Then we can see whether we want to have that last sentence in.
I would just, I would put a period after "artificial turf field" and strike out "constructed with materials that exclude tire crumb rubber."
Okay, so the whole last sentence is struck.
No, no, I would keep in, "the project will include an artificial turf field."
Okay.
Period.
Period. Okay.
Okay. I've had pressure at home, so I'll second.
Okay, so second the amendment. Okay, is there discussion about the amendment? We all clear about what we're voting? Okay. So the, just, the motion as amended reads, "to achieve a successful vote on a bond issue in March 2016 to fund an upgrade of the existing fields addressing safety and drainage concerns and to add a track, the project will include an artificial turf field." Okay, that's the amended?
We have to vote on the amendment.
Yeah, right.
Do people want to strike that?
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
So I need a second for the amendment. Oh, you seconded it.
Maria, Maria seconded it. Okay, so the motion is to strike, to strike that last, to strike?
Everything after field.
After, everything after field. Okay, that's the amendment, right? Okay. All those in favor?
Can I just ask, so I'm clear? My recollection was that the original motion was to approve the goals, and that the amendment was to add the language that Maria introduced. Is that correct?
No, because it was, it was never, objective three, goal three was never moved, other than the version that she created.
Okay.
Okay?
It was removed.
It was removed, it was removed.
Never acted on it.
Never acted on it. Right.
Okay, so the motion, Sarah?
So I guess I just want to speak to Kenny's motion. And I will support the statement without stopping it at turf field. I've done a lot of thinking about this and a lot of reading about this, and I do believe it's too early to narrow this down. But I really, really, really hope that this committee, and I know and trust a lot of these people on this committee, and I feel that we need to honestly evaluate both sides, and really any, anything that somebody views as a problem really needs to be looked at carefully.
Okay, agreed. So the amendment is to strike that last part, and then we'll vote on the motion as amended. Is that correct? Okay. So all those in favor of striking the last section of that statement, please raise your hand. Six in favor, student rep in favor, opposed? One person opposed, Maria's opposed.
Did you oppose, Maria?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
So motion?
Because I'm stubborn.
Okay. Okay. So the, so the statement now reads, "to achieve a successful vote on a bond issue of March 2016," ending then with "turf field." Okay, that's the motion now. Is there discussion on that?
Was that put on the table, Tom?
Oh, we have to, we have to.
Have a motion.
Okay, can you move?
It is moved.
I think it is moved, yeah.
Yeah.
No, no, it isn't moved. The amendment was moved.
That was Dan's question, hadn't been moved yet, had not been.
Yeah, I moved last time, that whole thing.
Yeah.
That motion is on, was on the table.
And Sarah seconded it.
Yeah, this is on the table. I think we're ready, I think we're ready to vote on this.
Yes.
As amended, the amendment was to take out that last.
Right.
Okay, that has been approved, but the rest of it has not been. Okay, so we're to vote?
Could I just, I just wanted to say quickly, Sarah, I very much appreciate your comment. And I'm not on that particular design element group. It will come back to the full group. But I assure you from hearing the discussion and knowing the people, that all that homework is going to be done.
I'm not going to drag this out, but yeah, in particular, what I would like to see is that we go visit some of the alternatives that have been done, because I've read a lot, too. And some of them, there's like low melting point, and it's a problem. And what you really want to hear is from people, you know, like anything, when you build something, the best advice you get is, what would you do differently? And I think that this is a case that when you spend all this money, you put this down, it's really difficult to do something differently. So it's well worth it to take the time to really look through this, because if you rush in on a whim of something else that you think is going to be better because you're worried about potential health benefits, and you end up with a quagmire, it's going to be a real problem down the road. So it's well worth it to take some time.
There's a distinguished member on the committee, a retired physician, Dr. Barth, who has made that point very clear. We need to be calling around and asking everybody what's going on with their fields. So, good point.
I try not to listen to that distinguished person.
Yeah, nobody's distinguished to their spouse. Okay, are we ready to vote? So the motion, it raises language up till turf field, and then period, and the rest is not. So are we ready to vote on that? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. Okay, so we have all our goals taken care of. Yeah, thank you for that. Okay, we have, let's see, okay, this shouldn't take, we have to vote on the scholarship request of the school board. This just allows us to pay out various scholarship funds out of the trusts. So could I have a motion on that?
I move that we are allowed the expenditure of the funding for the scholarships that our district gives to deserving students.
Okay. Seconded by Denise. All those, discussion on that? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Okay.
Tom, could I ask a quick question? And I'm not sure, I waited for actions. I'm not sure, it was a policy that came before us about curriculum. Do we need to approve the change in math curriculum? Is that something that falls in line with that policy?
I think that the policy is asking that curriculum be presented to the board. And I don't have it in front of me, but I'm not necessarily thinking it's asking the board to take an action, just that you are aware that we've made a significant change. That's my read of that policy.
Okay.
What happens to the competencies?
They're still in place, state law.
Just wanted to know.
Okay, we'd agreed to consider the shifting of the last day to a half-day for students and a full day for teachers. This is rescinding, I checked Robert's Rules of Order, and this is rescinding a previous action. So it needs a two-thirds vote, so it needs five votes. So I don't know if people would be ready to move to rescind our decision to have the June 9th be a full day for students and make it a half-day for students and a full day for teachers. Denise?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to rescind our previous vote to make the last day of school a half-day for students and a full day for teachers.
Okay, so you rescind the vote to make it a full day for stu-
Oh, oh, I'm rescinding the vote, yes, that was a full day.
Yeah.
Right, I'm, yes, okay. So I'm rescinding the vote that we made previously to make the last day a full day. That's correct.
And make it a half?
And make it a half-day instead. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that, half-day for students, full day for teachers? Is that, is that understand?
I could repeat it back to you.
I just ask, Dr. Morse, in terms of like bus schedules, lunch schedules, you know, is this manageable?
Sure, we would feed the kids because they are here. And in terms of the bus schedule, we would, the drivers still have to transport kids home, so there's no impact on their salaries, whether we go half-day or full-day.
Okay. Maria?
What was the reasoning for having a full day? I thought it sounded good last time.
It hasn't been seconded yet. Maybe we should be seconded first.
I'll second it.
Okay.
So there was no strong rationale, Maria? The question came up, and you said, when we were doing all half-day workshops, the Friday of the last, or whatever the last day step was half-day, then we went to full-day workshops. One year it was full-day, the second year it was half-day. So we haven't had any consistency related to that. And assuming if this particular motion passes, what I will do is just build that into the calendar so it never comes up as a consideration, and just be part of the calendar that you approved for the ensuing school year. Unfortunately, you've already approved next school year, so I'll have to bring it back to you for that blessing one more time. But after that, we'll just build it in.
Al?
Yeah, I was just going to say, it'd be great if you did that, because I know we like to keep people on their toes by changing like the graduation date, like, and the last day, so no one really knows to the end. But, but, you know, when I thought about it, it just seemed so, there was no real reason why we were doing this. I'm trying to, the high school, everyone's taking their finals, and I'm like, what are we going to say? Okay, you finished your finals, so why don't you just hang out for the rest of the day at the school? And then at the, at Moheramit, they had this really awesome teacher luncheon thing that they did at the end, and it brings in the PTO, and it brings in parents, and it's just a great way to finish the school. And I'm like, it just didn't seem like there was really any educational reason we were doing this. So I would hope that we don't repeat this ever again.
Have to repeat it once.
Yeah, I initially, when I heard that there was going to be a request for us to change, you know, rescind it, and I was like, no, we've already said it, we should stick with what we said. What I didn't realize until tonight is that there isn't a teacher workshop day. My assumption, because I didn't look at the actual schedule, is that there was an additional day for teachers to, you know, close down their classrooms. And hearing that that wasn't in the calendar, I'm like, yeah, of course, no teacher wants to get done at, you know, at the elementary school, 3:00 in the afternoon, and then have to start, you know. So that was my reasoning, because I do apologize to parents. I, believe me, as a working parent, I understand when there's a change in a schedule like this, you know, you're scurrying, okay, now I need childcare, and all those sorts of things. So I very much apologize for the inconvenience that that will cause, particularly, you know, working parents. However, hearing that this really is the last day, I think it's important to have that time to be able to, you know, continue with that tradition and just to be thoughtful about it.
So are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, student rep in favor.
Surprised the student rep was supportive.
She said, she said she had fun sticking around in the afternoon, too. Okay, the other thing that wasn't on the agenda that we added was the nomination for the middle school chorus, Jirika Olberg. So could I have a motion to approve this nomination? Al?
I'll make a motion to approve the middle school chorus instructor.
Moved by Al, seconded by Maria. Discussion?
Yeah, I have one, I just, just a question regarding Beth Struthers, and I, because when I saw that nomination, that it was mentioned in the, that she would be moving to the elementary school. And I just kind of wanted to know in terms of how that decision was reached, I guess.
Sure. She asked for the, she knew the opening was at Moheramit. She asked for the transfer. And historically, what we do is, if a teacher asks for a transfer, all things being equal, we usually honor it. I mean, this might be an exception to that, but Beth wanted to be at Moheramit, and we said yes.
Thank you.
Ready to vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Okay, returning to the regular agenda, a motion to approve the Oyster River Middle School Science teacher. Kenny?
I move that we approve Jonathan Derrick for the Oyster River Middle School Science teacher. From hearing what was said tonight, he's got some big shoes to fill, but it looks like the qualifications are excellent, so.
And great experience, yeah. Moved by Kenny, seconded by Maria. Here's the discussion. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. Okay, motion to approve the Masway Library Media Specialist position. Kenny?
I move to, that we, I move to approve Suzanne Tomazuski as the Library Media Specialist for Masway, replacing Adele Politzer, who also will be greatly missed.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Denise. Discussion on that? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. A motion to approve the Moheramit Grade One teacher. Kenny?
I move to approve Katherine Zeimer as first-grade teacher at Moheramit, and moving into the start of a very good career, I think.
By Kenny, seconded by Denise. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Okay, we have three policies for second read, student wellness, advanced coursework, advanced placement courses, and earning of credit. We could either approve those as a block, or if people want to separate them out. Yeah.
Can I ask one question concerning the teacher hiring before we jump into the policy?
Sure.
Dr. Morse, maybe you can answer. I was wondering, what is the, how, when teachers retire, and you're looking to fill a position, is there any guidance as far as step level that happens to the teams? I was surprised at the five hires that we have. We've hired a Step 11, a Step 12, a Step 14, and two, Step 1 and two steps. And while I totally value experience, obviously, on the board, you look at the money, too.
So, thanks, Sarah. It's a good question, and it's a delicate question.
I'm sure it is.
So, not in terms of money, but in terms of the answer.
All right.
The administrative team is aware that we want the best people possible. They also are aware of our monetary constraints. Having said that, we also have to be very cognizant of anti-discrimination law related to age. to age. Okay, that plays into this. So, when we look at particular positions that are difficult to fill, library media specialist would be one, you invariably end up with veteran people who you're basically stealing from another school system because they want to work for Oyster River, because of our reputation, and because of our pay scale. It becomes more problematic when you're looking at, say, the grade one position, and there are multiple applications, people right out of college to people who are at the top of the scale. So, the way that we operate is that we put together interview teams. It's not just the principal making a decision, but it's the principal plus a body of teachers, often a body of teachers at that grade level. So they screen through the applicants, and they are absolutely interviewing people of various experiences. So they go through a standard interview process, so if there were six people they interviewed for grade one, all six people are getting asked the same questions, because that's part of the process we're accountable to. And then they wean it down to who that team thinks is the most valuable to the school. And by statute, the other guiding principle is, we need to hire somebody who's most qualified. That doesn't mean most experienced. I mean, you could have somebody with three years of experience and have all kinds of credentials. The other factor that's playing in this year is the number of openings we have are far less this year than we've had in previous years. And when you have lots of openings, and you've seen this in, in last year and the year before, you are hiring people all over the pay range, beginners to senior people. When you have fewer teachers, what you're seeing is what you're seeing this year, where there's a lot of experience being brought in, some of it based on the position like lady, library media, others based on the best judgment of the interview team. So, that's a long answer, but I cannot dictate that we hire all new people, because it's against the law. We do have lengthy discussions at the administrative team level that we're looking for the best candidates we can afford, but then, once it gets out into the interview team component, we are getting feedback from not just the principal, but the teachers on the team, and collectively, they make a recommendation to me. Now, the next step of that process is, I ask the principals, whenever possible, to send me the two best candidates. And then I interview the two best candidates they have. In the case of the Library Media Specialist, both candidates were veterans. In the case of the first grade teacher, both candidates were veterans. So, yes, I can provide guidance, and yes, we have that, those conversations at length, but we also are committed to making sure that the people we bring in are the very best people we can get, not necessarily meaning experience, but in the particular cases of nominations you've been getting recently, those were the best candidates, by far, knock-your-sox-off kind of candidates. Now, you saw our music position come in tonight, and it was at the beginning of the scale. She happened to be the best candidate. So, the measure isn't only money, the measure is, is this a person who's going to move us forward as a school system? Is this a person who's going to contribute to that particular building? Is this a person that we want in Oyster River? So it's a much more multifaceted decision process than, you know, we would base it solely on money, because we couldn't. But, that's the long answer, to give you all the term, you know, all the factors that come into it. We'll have a couple of nominations at the next meeting, because I did some interviewing today, that tend to be at the top of the scale. Now, I will tell you that when that happens internally, we, Sue and I, work with the administrative team to account for how we're gonna pay for this. So it's not an issue of, oh, well, you can go off and, you know, spend like drunken sailors. It's, no, you can spend the money, but understand that we have to come back and find that difference. It just doesn't magically appear, which may mean that there's constraints on the budget next year that we didn't anticipate, because we've hired people that we thought would be better for the school system. So when we do make a decision, it's not a blind decision, it's, and it has a direct impact on how we work the budget forward.
I would, I would still say that, because I sign all the contracts now, and our salary sales really skewed towards experience.
Yeah.
And, and, I mean, you know, so many teachers are at the top, top of the scale, near the top of the scale, that, that I think there's almost a balancing issue to bring in younger teachers, just to get a diversity of, of experience, of age groups. And, and I'm just, you know, just wondering whether I'm more aggressive, like, I think of the university, if you're really, if you have no women in your department, you make a real effort to, to bring in women, you know, because you want to have the diversity. I think whether we have diversity in terms of age within our, within our school system, and whether there's an advantage to having that, you know, to having 20-year-olds who are new in their career teaching. And I, I'm just wondering if we have a culture where we're reluctant to do that, because it's always, it's always safer, I think, to bring in somebody who has 10 years' experience, because you have a track record. I mean, it's safer, but it's, it's expensive, and then it skews the whole, your whole staff towards experience, and puts them near at the top of the scale. So, I just, I just, I don't know whether you can like, it could be almost like, you know, calling Tom Schramm and calling people at, you know, Keene State and Salem State and say, hey, look, who's your best intern in math? Who's your best intern in, in reading? And let's just take a look at them, you know, bring them into the, bring them into the pool, and then if you decide, you know, still this person's better. But I mean, it seems to me that, I, I wonder sometimes if there's a culture here that says, you know, unless you're experienced, you're not gonna get a job at Oyster River, you know? So I'll just say that, because I, because it's a very expensive way of doing business, too, to-
Absolutely.
To do it, to, to only, to hire these top. And I'm sure these people are gonna be great, but just as a practice, which I think is your point, Sarah.
Yeah, and we've had, you know, we, I know, we've had some phenomenal teachers at all of the buildings, I'm sure, that are at the beginning of their, of their careers. And they, they bring an energy and an enthusiasm. Would I want an entire district filled with them? No, but I, I agree, I think there's a balance, and I'm, it's nothing against these people, they all look fabulous, and I think we are very lucky to have them.
I tell you, the thing that worries me is that, I don't want to have it so skewed that all of a sudden we have mass retirement at one, I mean, because that's the danger, that if you backload everybody, then, that they're all about the same age, and I, I don't mean that like, well, the same experience or, you know, in the retirement system, that suddenly, you know, when there's an incentive or something, we just lose so much brain trust there, and we're, we never get ahead. If you are kind of diversified, one, that they're mentoring, but also that we don't have the sudden departure, that's kind of more of an orderly moving through.
Okay. So, move to the policies, so we have three. I don't know if people are ready to move them as a block? I'm sorry, Denise?
Yeah, I, I will move that we approve for second read and adoption, student wellness, policy JLCF, advanced coursework, policy IHCD, and earning of credit, policy IK.
Okay, these three policies are moved as a block. Moved by Denise, is her second, seconded by Al. Is there discussion on these? Sarah?
I have a question. It was very helpful to get these policy committee meeting minutes, and particularly for me, for the policy JLCF. I was very sad to see the word changed from discourage to prohibit. I thought our staff, certainly at the schools I'm in, do a great job of really keeping celebrations in the classroom, and, you know, not foods aren't rewards, or, you know, excessively, but every once in a while, it's okay to have an ice cream party. So I guess I, it was very helpful to me to see that this was asked for by the Wellness Committee to be included in a district grant application, and I just hope that the amount of the grant is worth it, because that, that's a sad thing to me, that we all of a sudden are prohibiting, prohibiting, I mean, that's such a strong word.
But you're prohibiting it as rewards, you're not prohibiting celebrations. So there's a very big difference between the two.
So you can have a picture of an ice cream cone.
No, I mean, I get it, but I mean, I just think, I'm substituting in lower elementary school these days, and sometimes I can imagine a teacher just being like, oh my God, if you can fill this jar of marbles, we will have an ice cream party. I mean, so I, just prohibiting is just a very strong word, and I, I don't like it, but do we, do we know how much that grant is for?
I, I don't.
Okay.
We can just maybe call it a celebration.
I, I hope our teachers are creative in getting around that, but okay, I can, I've said my piece, thank you.
So, ready to vote on these three policies? Are there discussion? Okay, all those in favor of these three policies for second read, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor? Okay, school board committee updates?
I have one.
Denise?
Long-range planning committee is meeting tomorrow evening, so I will have an update at the next board meeting.
Great, thank you. All those? No? Kenny?
Just a continuation of the Fields Committee, and, and just to remind people of the structure, there's this broad-based Fields Committee that's been broken down into three subcommittees. One is called the Communications, and that's kind of approaching how to kind of inform the community of the issues that are seen, eventually inform the community of what the plan is, and then eventually try to work towards passing of the Fields Project. And that committee will probably be working hand-in-hand with the grassroots, organic kind of parents that have already organized, so we'll be working with them, they'll probably do a lot of that kind of work for us. As I mentioned, there's the Sustainable Design Subcommittee, which is looking at the infill and other aspects of that project that make it sustainable, drainage, where that drainage goes, the remaining grass that's there, maybe what is used. And then the last part is the finance, which will kind of shape how that project is presented to the community in a budgetary sense. And one of the things that came out of last night's meeting, which might be an extension of that finance, was tying to that, and probably working, again, with that grassroots, but fundraising in the community, and the ideas were talked about, will we have a brick pathway and people can donate money and get a brick in their name? Might we have a banner that the local, you know, pizza place wants to have? Might there be a name on a dugout? And so we thought that maybe that might be an additional piece that the Finance Committee can do with help from that community group.
So I would discourage that totally, Kenny. I think that the focus of the committee is not to talk about advertising, but to focus in on the work that you have in front of us. I think that would divert us from what our charge is. So I wasn't at the meeting, and Todd said that to me today, and he said, it's not a good idea, we really gotta keep our, you know, laser focus on, on the work. That could be something that could happen later, but I wouldn't make it part of this committee's charge. That would be how I feel about it.
And you're, you're the Finance Group, so I think that's, yeah.
Okay. Other committee updates? No?
Good to see everybody. I'm Dean Rubine from Lee. I was gratified to hear the discussion about the steps. Every year, you know, often we vote on these contracts, where we approve the size of the raises. I think it was two, one and a half, one and a half, or something, this time around. And if we actually want to realize those, you know, to keep our growth to that level, we have to be sure that when people go off the top step, that we sort of fill, fill along the bottom steps, to sort of keep the average step level constant. Otherwise, otherwise the pay for teachers increases faster than those rates that are approved by the public. This is one of my pet peeves, I have, I sort of think the district operates under two unwritten policies that cost the taxpayers a lot of money. One of them is this sort of magical 18 for the class size, which is not written down, and the other one is this sort of, we're always gonna hire the best. I think this, both those areas are ripe for the board to, to provide actual policy to, to guide the administration when they're hiring. But what I really wanted to say was, last night, I was at the middle school Pay It Forward Potluck Dessert. It was for one of the teens.
Fusion, your daughter's on-
My daughter's on Fusion, I should know that. A lot of emails from Jason, and I think he was one of the principals here, and Diane Trigay. Anyway, the projects the students did were all incredibly great, a lot of support for N68 Hours of Hunger of various sorts, and a lot of just shoveling snow and doing lots of great work around the, around the community. So congratulations to the teachers and the kids on all that. Thanks.
Hi, Janet Perkins-Holland from Durham. As we finish a school year, I came up to public comments to give a family compliment to the, to the administrators, particularly the principals of, I don't have any exposure to the Massway Principal, I'm sure she's terrific, but I do have lots of exposure to the other three principals, and as a daughter of a elementary school principal, I know that they work long hours, we know that, we all know that, and sometimes late at night in the weekends, but I wanted to just comment that these guys are great listeners. I know that that, because I talk to them a lot, and bug them a lot, and don't always compliment that, them, so here I am, giving them a compliment. They're involved in issues, and they want to help. I, as I thought about the past month, I've seen Mr. Harrington dressed up in full Peace Corps India garb at his school. I've seen Mr. Richard judging the pet fashion show. I've seen Mr. Allen getting a sunburn at Coebround Track Meet on a Saturday. So, I promised a family compliment, so before I came, I polled my three children to give three different words about the principals' compliments for the principals. And the first word that they came up with was politically correct. So I did point out that this was two words, and maybe a back-up compliment, so I asked for a second pass. That child then said dedicated, and the second child said fair, and the third child said funny. So I just wanted to say thank you so much to the principals for all your hard work and dedication. Thanks.
Thanks, Sarah. Other public comments? Okay, next meeting, June 17th, regular meeting, and then a manifest meeting on the, the 1st of July. So, yeah, Sarah?
I didn't jump in during Jim's, I had a question that I was told from the district office that I had to bring to a public meeting. So I had a community member ask me about the Green Team Leader position that's being advertised through the district. And I read the advertisement and didn't know where to steer her, because she was asking, is this person somebody that is going to be in all the schools? And I said, well, I thought historically, we had a Green Team Leader in each school, so I was wondering if the org, if the structure of that has changed, and-
Yeah, originally, we had one for each building, and what we realized was that that particular structure wasn't working, believe it or not, as effectively as the three-person group that we have now. So the Green Team is three people, and there is a pretty comprehensive job description for the position, and they work closely with the Sustainability Committee and the building principals to create initiatives, building specific and district-wide.
So the three people are all in all buildings?
Yeah, to, to agree. They do have principal buildings, you know, focused buildings, but they then also help in the other buildings.
Okay, great, thank you.
They act more as a team with some building focus, but district focus as well.
And that same amount of money was split between the three as opposed to the five?
Each of them gets $6,600.
Okay, thank you.
Maria?
We've voted on the budget calendar, which starts in August. And since I already told you I'm stuck here. We have voted to have a discussion on...
I would, I would see that as one of the first things we do, is to formulate how we're gonna frame our budget goal, because that was the issue.
Well, I would love to see it in July, so that it's similar.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk about, talk with Sue about when. And I think to see different ways of framing the budget goal, because I think that the question was, do you frame it the way we did last year? Or do you frame it in terms of the, the net impact upon the community? I think that was one of the issues that came up.
Sue is gonna take the current approved budget and show it in that format.
Okay, so we'll see how, how things, how, different ways in which it can be formulated. So, so either, either in July or, you know, but before, before, before we get into the budget season, it'll happen.
Which is in August.
Could I, I'm sorry, it's that, if we could have some information, too, about how the formula works for the communities? So how that tax rate gets determined for the three communities? How Durham's increased valuation assessment might have an impact to the three towns? And maybe even how Durham's TIF affects the three towns? So just, so we just have an understanding, a greater understanding of the impact on a household.
Sure. Okay. So a motion adjourned?
Some more.
Moved by Maria, seconded by Al. All in favor, please raise your hand. We adjourn.